Well, Clark, call it all.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Moving on to a public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and is there anybody who would like to come forward at this time?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I brought this subject up in the past and there's been no resolution or doesn't seem to be overlooked. It's about the county counselor, Mike Montoya. He never, ever shows up at these public meetings so that, you know, we can ask him questions about issues that we're concerned with. But yet he'll show up at these study sessions upstairs and that does provide a little bit of access to him. But there was one time in the past I was told that if I wanted to ask him a question about what was going on in a study session, I had to talk, get permission from the chairman. And I believe that is just wrong. I mean, Binkston, the city attorney, shows up at every meeting, you know, with, you know, you know, with the appropriate people. And we haven't been able to have access to Mike as well as we should, let's put that way. He's a, he's an important individual in the county and he should be available to the public for questioning without having to track him down. And that's, that's just the point I tried to make and thank you very much.
Thank you. Reed, I will follow up on that a little bit just because I have asked, had other people ask us that too. What, what is the history of that? Has that always been that way? Is it a...
It's been that way ever since I've been with the county.
Okay.
I, I mean, there's, I think it's just the practice.
I think that Commissioner Peter John, he answered that at one of our, at one of them stations the other day. They don't have a county admin, uh, attorney at their, either. So it's not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's at every forum.
I think the reason the city county attorney has to be there every week is because they're throwing out so much stuff that's illegal. They need the commissioner there or the attorney there to make up excuses. And I sit there and watch him and it's like his lips are moving, he's lying. I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it.
Well, Ray, thank you for the point. Appreciate it. Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
My name's Darrell Allison and I do live in the country, but my main concern is, is yesterday I picked up a lady, an elderly lady, that doesn't drive and I brought her up here to the courthouse so she could find out if she was a registered voter. Well, she did find out she was a registered voter. The only thing about it is in the computer it had her down as deceased. So I just...
Which was news to her, I'm sure.
Well, it was. It wasn't shock to her. But they did change it and she was able to vote. I know in the past that some people haven't got ballots and some people got more than one. It seems like to me that in our computer system, there must be a glitch with a variety of people, not just one, two, or three people. And I'd like to see something done about it. I don't know what can be done. I don't know that much about computers and I will admit that. But to me, with what's happened here in the past and we're going to come into a big election, it seems like to me something needs to be done to make sure that everything's going to be on the up and the up when that does happen.
Well, I think what's good about our election is a month, about a month before it starts to dawn, we have, you can come into the, into just about a month before the election, you can come and vote at the, right here.
About 20 days.
And that gives people 20 days, that gives people a good oppor-. I like to have a place to go vote. I do not, I didn't get my mail-in ballot. I came and got mine, my wife couldn't make it to town, she never got to vote. It's not right. I don't like this mail-in thing. I don't like it at all. I like going to the poll and voting. And if, and if you're elderly, you can call and, and you will send out for people that are elderly, right? There's ways of getting everybody to vote. But this mail ballot, I don't like it at all, so.
My opinion on that is that you should be able to go somewhere.
And vote.
In person and vote then, when the election happens. A mail-in ballot, I, I, I will agree, I don't, don't like that.
Well, I can see somebody's out of, especially our servicemen that are out of the country, we send it to them, they mail them back. They can even come in a little late, can't they, dawn the ma- the servicemen and...
Well, their deadline's 45 days out, so, I mean, it starts, not the deadline, but the voting starts 45 days out. And we actually, for people in the armed forces, we can email them a ballot.
So we got a good op, we got good options for those that can't get out.
We also have a permanent advance status for anybody who's got an illness, a disability that doesn't allow them to get out and they get a ballot every election. So that person, that person you were talking about.
That'd be good for her.
If she can't get around, we could do a, a permanent advance for her.
She can get around though, right? She got, came up here and did it, didn't she?
Yeah. Yeah.
I picked her up and brought her up there.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I want to just personally thank you for bringing her because I understand sometimes people have, are at a disadvantage, either by where they live or driving status or, or whatever. But I do hope, and I'm saying this just so that it's a public comment here and, and the viewers at home can also hear me say, that I think this mail-in election that is, is ending here in about 55 minutes, should serve as a wake-up call for those that might have had difficulty getting anything at home. And don't wait until November 1st to realize that you're not registered or registered incorrectly. Starting tomorrow, May 11th, you can already go down to the election clerk's office and figure out if you've moved, if you've changed your name. We have people that marry and they change their name or they move just, you know, two blocks or, you know, one mile in the, in the, in Saline County. It's very important that they take this seriously and do it early so that come for the primary and then the, the election in November, you've got all your ducks in a row and you can vote without having any little, any glitches, as you put it.
Well, I thought being, you know, we know what's taking place.
Right.
That's why I thought it'd give us plenty of time to get maybe these glitches taken care of before we do get into the general election. That's all my concern was.
And I, and I brought it up two weeks ago or three weeks ago, I think also, in my address, we got three extra, you know, and so, your points are well taken and appreciated.
The problem is the voters haven't, haven't notified us that they've moved and we don't know.
Right. Well, I can understand that, too.
But the more that you talk, like you bringing this up and, you know, on television and everything, I think is very helpful, so.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what I was thinking anyway.
Exactly. Yeah, she may not be the only one that had a situation with how she was registered.
Yep.
So like I said, this should be a wake-up call for anybody that wants to vote in the primary and in the general election this year. Thank you.
You look, you look very much alive out there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Darrell. Further public comment?
Yeah, Norman Mantle, Pleasant Hill Road. Kind of following up on what Ray was talking about. More than once, an issue has come up in front of this panel and you will take advice from somebody else on this panel, which is, could be considered a legal opinion, but yet this person is not a lawyer to give his legal opinion. So therefore you could be, if you take action on that person's advice...
Okay, thank you.
Judy Larson, 215 South Chicago. There is absolutely no way that Commissioner Price is correct, but he has a history of expressing his own opinion rather than fact. The city commissioners, the city attorney are fine, upstanding people of integrity and they do not lie, contrary to what is the habit of this certain commissioner. And, and I just think it's unconscionable that he would say that publicly.
Anybody else would like to come forward today? Seeing then, we'll move on to regular business. Item number one.
Approve the agenda for the public forum as presented today.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented today.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Item number two.
Approval of the county commission minutes for May 3rd, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of May the 3rd, 2016 as presented.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Item number three.
This is request for Action 153-16 for fiscal year 2017, Kansas Department of Corrections' Adult Services Grant with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's been a long time since I've seen you all, so.
Sure.
It's delighted to be here. This is our annual, so if you've been here more than a year, you know this is our annual largest grant that we submit and it's only for adult services, it's to the Department of Corrections. They did a little change this year in that they used to not give us an allocation to shoot for and you would write your grant and submit a budget for all your high expectation needs and you would be reduced in the funding, obviously, and you'd have to submit those budgets over and over again to get it to where it fit into what their allocation was. This year, they gave us an allocation, not one I'm happy with, but at least it's a good start for us. We're writing the grant for $872,140.30. It's an approximate $46,000 reduction from the previous year. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Remember, this is only adult services. The shared resources such as rent, transportation, communication is broken out 65% to 35% and the 35% is paid by our juvenile grant, which will be doing later in the new year. And that's based on population served and staffing patterns. So I'm going to just touch the highlights of the grant. You've had it for a little while and so if you've read it or perused through it, you kind of understand. The first section is what they call narrative, but it is, it's a very important section because it allows me to delve into what have we done this last year, what are we looking forward to next year, what does our client population look like, what's our staffing patterns, where are we exceeding outcomes, where can we do some more work, all those things that are so important to an agency. I don't know how any agency can move year to year without knowing those factors of everything that's going on in your agency. So it's all data we keep, it's all information that I'm looking at monthly, but to put it together and look at it for the previous year or coming into the new year is beneficial to me every time. The next piece are just integrated models. It's evidence-based practices. You know that everything community corrections does is based on evidence. It shows you what you should be doing to work with high-risk, high-need offenders. And so it talks about what do you do with the clients, what does the staff do on a daily basis, how does staff interact with clients, what are your expectations of staff and clients, how do you deal with staff and clients that refuse to come ahead and move into the evidence-based world, all those opportunities. One thing I want to say is that it's always been in paragraph forms. And if you looked at this grant at all, you'll see that I went with bullet statements this year. That was the first year they've allowed to do bullet statements. A lot of fluff can go into a grant that's all paragraph. You find yourself rewriting the same statement, you find yourself saying the same thing in a different way. I was so excited about the bullet statements because they're clear, concise, and get right to the point. So I chose bullet statements and I hope they don't take that away next year because it was handy. The next page is just the board and who's on the board. Page 10 is our collaborative partners. This used to be about half a page, three fourths of a page, it's gone to almost two pages now. And these are our most-used collaborative partners. We use a lot of people and we don't put them all in here, but we, we hit the high points and all the people that have really shared resources with us and work with us on a daily basis. The next piece, again, is more evidence-based practices, how we monitor ourselves, how we assure that we're doing quality work, how we talk to the clients and how we know that they're receiving quality services, those kind of things. And that goes on for several pages. What I really want to talk to you about is what we're going to track for next year. We track a lot of data and we'll continue to do that, but, well, let me go back. On page 22, it talks about our organizational capabilities. It talks about our staffing patterns and the work that we do in our agency, but it really hones in on our advisory board and our advisory board subcommittee. Years ago, our advisory board niched out a subcommittee and they're required to meet with me every month and they do. And I talk to some of them every other week or more frequently than that. They help me make good decisions, they help me modify and change, they help me listen and share issues that are going on the office, whether they're strengths or challenges. They really provide me with an opportunity of a good sounding board and some feedback. And then they report back to the full board, every board meeting, anything that we've changed or modified or are looking at strengths or challenges. So I want to thank that advisory board subcommittee that give and dedicate their time, Todd Heitschmidt, George Cardinal, and Kevin Carrico. Then the pieces I want to talk about are evaluation pieces. Every year, you try to address something a little unique beyond what we normally look at. We always look at recidivism, UA collection, numbers of clients, successful completions, revocations, all those typical things that every agency's been looking at that's in our area. But this year, I really wanted to talk about things and look at things that I think are impacting our clients and, and helping them not, are barriers to their being successful. So the first thing is a requirement. DOC says you have to ha- show a 3% increase in successful completions or reach 75%. We're at 72.5%, which is tremendous for our agency because we carried about a 69% success rate for years. And to jump up to 72.5, I was elated. But I have no choice but to go for 75% now because 3% is over 75%. If I told staff that I put that in here, they would be thinking, what more can we do where it's 72% success rate? Which is amazing, it's great to think about your population of high-risk, highly drug-addicted offenders that you're successfully graduating at 72.5%. We're shooting for 75 next year, will we meet it? I don't know, but we're certainly going to work hard to try to get there. The next thing is one of my, dear to my heart, is unemployment. We have a lot of clients that come to us unemployed, a lot get jobs, we have a lot of great businesses in here that'll hire offenders, but we have some that just aren't as motivated to find that employment and you have to work with them and work with them and work with them. Well, we're going to step that up, we're going to work with them even harder. We have about 25% of our active caseload that could be employed, unemployed. We're going to reduce that rate by 20% next year. We're going to increase some classes, we're going to increase some awareness, we're going to get out there and beat the streets and talk to more employers, we're going to do what we can to get those offenders employed. We think that one of the steps to successful completion is employment. We feel like you have to be employed, you have to fill your time. Offenders are no- notable for having too much free time. And if their days are not structured well, they tend to do inappropriate behaviors. So we want them structured. The next thing we're going to work on is homelessness. Believe it or not, we have about 10 to 15 clients that are home, truly homeless. We go and see them underneath the bridge, we go see them in this brush area where the man has a tent because they have ruined their opportunities at the rescue mission. They've been barred for anywhere from 60, 90, 120 days, maybe for life, I don't know, depending on what it is. I understand the mission has to have rules, I get it. So I understand their, their dilemma with ta- having a truly homeless person they can't service. Same thing with Ashby House, they may be barred for a time and so we have homeless people. We visit them at those places at this point because we can put a Band-Aid on it, and I do, and put them in hotels, but that only secures them for a short time. What we need to do with them is educate them and get them employed so that they can function on their own. So this homeless effort and the employment kind of go hand in hand, I believe. One of the things I want to do is not solve our homeless problem because I realize that's next impossible. I understand that. But what I want to do is put together a committee that is going to be looking at it on a regular basis, looking at shared resources, what can we do to reduce the homelessness. We already have a committee that I'm going to tap into with the jail, Catholic Charities, and our agency, and the mental health center. And I'm going to expand that effort and meet monthly with those people and really work on that effort. So that's one thing we're going to try to do. The other one is increasing our services for mental health clients. A lot of clients have mental health issues. They come to us, they haven't had their meds for months, they haven't refilled them, they don't have the money to refill them, they can't get into the mental health center because they've missed so many appointments or on a day reporting. And a day reporting is, if you're lucky enough to get in, you get in, but you sit there until they accept you. And if you don't get in that day, you walk away. So I want to have a better concerted effort on addressing our mental illness. We have clients that are mentally ill, they come to us and we maybe work with them a month or more on their mental illness issue before we even tackle their probation. I just met with a man that had been with us for almost a month and we hadn't even gone over his probation order because every time he came into our agency, he got agitated and started yelling and got irritated and we could not calm him down enough to go through the process because you have to read it and they have to acknowledge it and sign it. And so we would end the appointment and set the next appointment up. And we just took step by step by step and finally got him on his meds, finally got him into some services, and then addressed his probation. But to wait a month out to address their probation really is doing a disservice to everybody involved. But if you can't deal with that because they're mentally ill, you have to start somewhere. So I want to work on that. So those are two, three things that I really want to see some changes in and some improvement in our population. The next piece is your budget, our budget. I brought Rosie Walter here, grant budget specialist. She is the budget guru and has been my partner for more years than I'm even going to admit to, but she will take this budget and put it together for me and then I take it and I scratch through it and I give it back and I give it back and I give it back. And she is always gracious to my face. I have no idea what she says behind the closed door, but she never complains and she always sits down and works with me on, you know, why do we need that money there, why are we doing this, can we look at something else, can we do it? And she just keeps coming back with me and giving me a budget that finally is top-notch. So I applaud her, I think she's probably one of the best in the state of Kansas. Everybody wants a Rosie and I, I want to make sure that I, I say that. She's probably back behind me crying because she gets real emotional, but let me tell you, she, I would never give her up and if she tried to walk away, I'd grab her by ankles and drag her down. So I'm very grateful for her work. It includes all those adult services, staffing, salary benefits, it includes all our shared resources I mentioned earlier, rent, communication supplies, everything that we need is split at 65-35. But remember, five staff are not even in here. I have to seek other grants and other resources to fund our agency for everything we do. This doesn't even fund it. So, you know, people think, well, $900,000, that sounds like a lot of money. Well, it's a little bit of money when it comes to funding a large agency and servicing clients. It just is not enough. And so the next critical piece is your normal things, but also then your client services. We try to tap as much dollars as we can into client services. We spend a lot of money, housing, clothing, medication, food, mental health, substance abuse, you name it, we're tapping into it and helping them fund those services. And so we take as much as we can out of there and what we can't get out of here, we take it out of other revenue sources, other grant sources and other areas. So we are certainly make clients a priority in the, our agency and want to get to that 75% success rate. So having me said all that, we are asking your permission to sign off, I need all signatures of the commissioners. This has been in front of the advisory board and they did approve and sign. It went in front of Ottawa County Commissioners yesterday and they did approve and sign. It is due to the Department of Corrections on May 13th. So I'm seeking your permission to forward this on to the Department of Corrections and receive hopefully the full amount of allocation they've allowed us to have.
All right, thanks. Question or comments? I think one question I had upstairs and I'd like you to kind of answer it again if you can, is how you fund your budget and how important grants are.
Yes. We're the only, community corrections across the state of Kansas is the only probation service that must sustain itself through grant funding. Some counties are lucky, Sedgwick County, Kansas City, now Saline County, and get some county dollars. And so they don't, that's not usually a grant application, but everything else has to be grant funded. So if you don't meet the needs in this grant, I seek out other grants. And I'm up to about five or six grants probably a year to find the sources and resources for staffing and client services.
And what is the cost to the county for these grants?
There's no cost to the county for grants. The county does give us about $178,000 for drug court resources. And then we write a federal grant for that and we also take some money out of our reimbursement dollars to also supplement drug courts.
We get a lot for our dollar.
You do if you look at the successful graduates versus them being locked down and, and, and not being productive citizens anymore. They are productive citizens. You know how much work they're doing in the community now. Two of them sit on a, a committee.
Right.
Several of them are mentors in the community. And I wanted to say June 13th is our next graduation for drug court and I believe we're up to 12 graduates.
12 this time?
Yes.
Wow. And 37 would be, wow, almost 50.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
And then, and then if you don't mind, instead of waiting for your next update, will you just briefly go over your presentations that you had in Manhattan last week?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We presented to the Kansas Commissioners Association, County of County Commissioners Association, last week, I think in Manhattan. We had two presentations, they were identical presentations, but a whole new crowds coming in. Well-received, lots of good questions from the commissioners all across the state of Kansas. Most of them do not have drug courts, there's only about five drug courts in the state of Kansas, very interested. Did ask us how much money's being funneled into from the county and we're astonished by the amount of funds and what we can do with that. We're very impressed with services, the weekly interactions with the judge. I think everywhere there, they got to hear Judge Johnson speak from his heart about how this important this is to work with highly addicted offenders. We talked about, most of our clients started using drugs with their parents at age 10 or 12. So you're talking about at age 10, they started? And our oldest graduate, graduate, I think Judge said was 63 years of age. So you're talking long-term usage that they stopped using and became productive members of society. It's not an easy program, it's at least 18 months, you're giving three to four UAs a week. They're random, you report to the judge every week, you report to the officers twice a week. There's just so much structured time within drug court that, that's one of the things that makes it so positive. The rapport between the staff and the judge and the clients is astronomical. And we have community partners that come every week and assist us, mental health centers, treatment providers, attorneys, different people that help us run drug court. So all that's vital. So we talked about that and we talked about the years and what we've seen, we gave them our graduate totals and those kind of things. It was very well received and we enjoyed being there.
Further questions or comments? Public comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Earlier in Ms. Grievous's comments, she talked about homeless people and the mental health and that, I actually attended that meeting where they talked about that a little bit and they were considering, you know, creating an advisory board to look into that issue. Since I attend many of these meetings, I am unable to speak at these meetings to offer any input from the public. We just talked about this issue up in the study session upstairs. My suggestion was, and, and, you know, Annie asked me after the meeting about this issue and what my idea was, and I said I wouldn't give it to her because I need to have everybody hear it, not just Annie, you know, hear it. And we had a discussion about that and that was fine. But what I would, my suggestion was, years ago, there used to be a place called, in Saline County, called The Poor Farm. And The Poor Farm took in people that couldn't have any, any way to support themselves and they grew their own food and, you know, they tried to make them more self-reliant. Now, this to me makes sense to at least look into it as an, and to get an advisory board of the members of the Community Corrections Board is going to be a biased opinion about what they're, you know, what they're going to come up with. And it may not be biased, but it could be. And what I'm asking for is to look into the public comment at Community Corrections meetings, which is in their bylaws, which actually gives them the right to restrict public comment. Now, five minutes on an hour meeting is nothing to at least allow the public to talk about it. In fact, I'm probably the only one that attends these meetings as a member of the public. And to be like singled out that I can't speak because that's their rules made up by the members, I think the members need to be looking at this in a different fashion. The, the public actually supports Community Corrections and there's the issue. If you, if, if public, if the public can't talk at these meetings, we've got a transparency issue. And this is the same issue that we talked about earlier in the day, about planning and zoning public comments and restricting input. Now, we're, we're, we're trying to solve that problem right now. This would be another issue that could be resolved at the same time.
Okay.
And I would just appreciate if the commissioners and, I'll try to help Annie too about this, look into the public comments at a Community Correction meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comments about this grant? Bring it back to the commission for further comments or ac-. Bring it back to the commission for further comments or action.
Mr. Chairman, I want to commend Annie and her staff for doing a very good job.
Thank you.
I move we allow the Community Corrections to submit the fiscal year seventeen KDOC Comprehensive Plan Grant Application as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you too, Rosie. Item number four.
This is a request for Action one fifty-five dash sixteen and environmental code change with David Neal, Planning and Zoning Director.
Good morning, commissioners. Now, last week, we had talked about doing an environmental code change to change the language to define the administrative agency. The part that we're changing is going from the name Celine County Health Department and we're changing Health Department to a department named by resolution. That way, we don't have to make code changes in the future. The code will meet wherever the county commission decides to have the environmental codes handled. For this part, we are... the county commission is just approving the language that we will send to the state for their approval. Once the state gives us their approval, we will advertise that in the paper for three weeks and then hold a public hearing so that we can formally adopt those codes. Do you have any questions?
It's fairly simple, it sounds like.
Hopefully.
Questions?
It seems strange to me that we have spent four hundred hours to get this minor little technical thing done. But when we talk about important considerations and code changes, we're not gonna have to do that?
When we talk about... we're gonna be talking about more code changes on the twenty-fourth. This one, we want to get through because it creates a legal loophole, basically. When we talk about the more code changes, if we are making other code changes, we will have to once again publish those changes for three weeks in the paper. And that's what the estimated four hundred dollars is, is publication cost.
So we're gonna pay four hundred now and we're gonna do another four hundred when we do that.
If we do that, yes.
It seemed like we could've done it all at once.
With this one, because we are recodifying our codes, the entire municipal county code, we want to have this one put in there so it's in place as soon as possible.
I got to talk to Lincoln, known a lot Lincoln, Ottawa County and Ellsworth County Commissioners, and they're very pleased with what's going on with their septic tank service.
I hear the same thing from them and I'm gonna give...
Is that right, Jim, what we heard?
Yeah.
I'm gonna give credit to my sanitarians, Sean Estrel and Kevin Urban, that take care of those other counties. Give them all the credit for giving the good service.
Is there any public comment on this?
Ray Ruska, two thirty-five, North Santa Fe. One question. Why? Why are we doing this?
Because right now, the code says that the administrative agency that handles environmental regulations is the Health Department.
It's not the Health Department anymore.
It's not the Health Department.
The commissioners turn it over to Planning and Zoning, so we need to change the name. We have to do it illegally to be legal. It's very obvious.
So we're gonna spend how much?
We end up having, I'm estimating, four hundred dollars on publication costs.
Well, Mr. Smith has made a comment about four hundred in and out. Is that times two?
If we make other code changes, the standard will probably be about four hundred dollars to make code changes.
If we don't have a legal name, how can we do legal code changes? We've got to get this taken care of.
What's the code changes you want to change?
We'll find out in the meeting. We don't have time for that, do we?
No, but I mean, we don't know the code changes.
In general.
Yeah, just general. Anything from now on, yeah.
But we have to have a name to put it in.
It's frustrating. I mean, that publication thing is... that's a frustrating cost. I share that concern, yeah. All right. Further public comment?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Norman, Mano Pleasant Hill Road. I was gonna mention this at the public forum, but I see that Mr. Neal was here. And it was mentioned upstairs about we're having such controversy with the planning and zoning meetings. I just wonder if the commission would like to ask the director to explain his actions of screaming and shouting going on at that meeting.
I don't. I was comfortable with the action taken this morning that our counselor will contact him and proceed by there. Is there anybody else that is uncomfortable with what we talked about this morning? All right. Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt RFA one fifty-five dash sixteen, the environmental code change, and allow the Board of County Commissioners authority to alter the administrative agency in charge of environmental service by order of a resolution as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five.
Proclamation declaring May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May fifteenth to the twenty-first as National Police Week. Proclamation will be read by Deputy Matt Fisher of the Celine County Sheriff's Office.
Welcome, deputy.
Thank you. Good morning. Proclamation declaring May fifteenth, twenty sixteen, as a police officer's memorial day and May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as the National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as the National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency, the Celine County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Celine County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and weak against the oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Celine County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now and therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, Celine County, Kansas, call upon all citizens of Celine County and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May fifteenth through May twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who, by their faith and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so, have established themselves as inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, Celine County, Kansas, further call upon all citizens of Celine County to observe Friday, May fif... excuse me, May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service in their community or have become disabled in their presence of duty and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all fallen heroes. Adopted this tenth day of May two thousand and sixteen by the Board of County Commissioners, Celine County, Kansas.
Very good. And what activities do you have planned this week?
The... on Monday, the sixteenth, at eight o'clock, there will always be the annual Jerry I.V. Memorial or the public's invited. Then right after that, at about nine o'clock, the City of Salina Police Department will be unveiling their new memorial wall there at the sign police department. The public is always welcome to partake in the ceremonies.
Very good. Very good. Well, is there a motion before I present the proclamation to him?
Mr. Chair, I move that we declare May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May fifteenth through the twenty-first as National Police Work Week.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
We kept you here all this time just to... I went to the city. I went to the...
You've had Annie present.
Yeah. We went to the city. I went to the city meeting yesterday. And they had the officers. They had the officers right at the very first before they even did anything and they got them out of there. But we enjoy seeing you guys sit out there so we can see your faces. Yeah, all right. You're not on the clock, are you? All right.
Any other business that needs to come before the commission today?
Thank you for your services.
Announcements. We will reconvene at one o'clock for a afternoon session. Is there any other announcements that needs to be made?
I'd like to read a quote from Samuel Adams. "The name of the Lord says the scripture is a strong tower. There the righteous flee and are safe. Let us secure his favor and he will lead us through the journey of this life and at length receive us to a better."
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned till one o'clock.